To begin, as you can see, we have a great and large group of council hopefuls here. Thanks again to the League of Women Voters and the various neighborhood councils who've made tonight possible. With that, we're going to have slightly different format for this particular portion of the evening. We're going to shorten the answer portion to one minute. So there are one-minute answers, please be concise. We will also have a two-minute introductory statement by each candidate, followed by a one-minute closing statement after the series of questions. Again, we will be formulating the questions both by League of Women Voters officials and also some audience participation in the cards that we've received, and we should have a lively discussion. With that, we will look to begin from left to right. I will not announce every member, we'll announce them one at a time before their intro statements. So with that, at the far left, Dave Shoenthal, please begin with your introductory statement of two minutes.
And Naomi will hold up the yellow when you have 30 seconds, and the red when you're through.
Thank you, Dee.
Can both of you some microphones be on at the same time?
Yes.
All right. We got that too shortly, so.
You've got one minute.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I thought it was two minutes for opening.
Two minutes for opening statement, is it correct? Yes, two minutes, please.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. Thank you very much for this wonderful evening that you've put together here for the League of Women Voters and to the community members in these wonderful neighborhood councils. My name is Dave Shoenthal, I'm running for Richmond City Council 2018. Our families lived in Richmond for 18 years, and 12 years ago, we brought home our adopted daughter from Omaha, Nebraska, so the only place that she's ever known is Richmond. So we're raising a first-generation Richminder. For most of my adult life, I've spent in customer service, sales, and business development, where I've achieved a high level of success. I own my own business with Legal Shield, helping people get affordable access to the legal justice system. I also provide digital advertising consultation, and I'm an investor in Kaleidoscope Coffee in Point, Richmond. Nine years ago, I started my community volunteer career to raise money for my daughter's elementary school. I was the first co-president of Washington Elementary's Dad's Club, and then I became the president of the Point Richmond Business Association and chair of the Picnic in the Point fundraiser, which is on October 20th from 12:00 PM till 5:00 PM. Come out and enjoy, it's gonna be a great time. Through the Picnic in the Point fundraiser, we've raised over $100,000 for great local nonprofits like Mindful Life Project, Washington Elementary PTA, Richmond Swims, PRAM, and Let's Grow Richmond, as well as donating to the Milo Foundation in honor of slain teenager Niko Martinez. Today is the anniversary of his death. As president of the Point Richmond Neighborhood Council, we worked on key issues such as parking, housing, neighborhood cleanup, and donating food to the champion Kennedy High School football team. So I've supported community representation for our children's education, as well as participating in the visioning process for Point Mulatto. Recently, I've assembled a group of incredible government organizations, nonprofits, and community leaders to host an expungement workshop for those formerly incarcerated for nonviolent offenses. Having served their time, we can serve our community by helping them to achieve their second chance to be productive members of our community on September 29th.
With that, I propose... Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shoenthal. I would also remind all candidates, please turn off your electronic devices, as well as those in the audience, so that we have no disruptions.
I'm gonna have to feed mine on to give him time, okay?
Thank you.
Just tell them where...
Oh, there it is. There you go. Go for it, sir.
With that, introductory statement, please, candidate Vinay Pimplay.
Hello, all. Thank you for coming out here. So I'm Vinay. A bit about myself, I've been a teacher, a software engineer, and an attorney. And now, I'm where I am because so many people have helped me. I'm blind, and in India, you don't have the government giving you services if you're disabled. I got a lot of volunteer help from my friends who were my classmates, from my teacher who would read out to me every time she had a free period. So that is why, and see, I can't help those people back because fortunately, they don't need my help. But I can help other people in my turn. And that is why, you know, for five years, I've been working as a volunteer, as a writer coach in Richmond High, while I mentored with ARPEL, while I joined Richmond Trees, and together, we have planted over 500 trees in our city. And that is why I serve on the Crime Prevention Board. And I see some people on the Crime Prevention Board here, or at least I've heard them, Naomi and Dee, that way. So, you know, and that is why I'm running for city council. And those of us who have been here, we know that the big challenges for Richmond have been and will be education, jobs, and public safety. And these three are really tied to each other, because we need to get our children a good education so they go to college. I'm sure that the Richmond Promise would give a scholarship to every single Richmond student. We also, I've also worked to make sure that our adults who go through LEAD do get trapped into the building trade, and I serve on the Crime Prevention Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pimplay. Next introductory statement, two minutes, please, Nat Bates.
Good evening, everyone. So good to see you. If I look in the audience, I know many of you on a personal basis, but I just want to give a couple accolades. With the combination of Santa Fe, Coronado, Iron Triangle Shields, Reed, Parchester Village, Richmond Village, Metro Square, you are setting the precedent. Forty years I've been on the council, we've never had organizations come together. And I know you've done a great job on the leadership of Linda Jackson Whitmore Patton, the general of this organization, I suspect, and how she maneuvered and helped you put this together. So you'll be congratulated. I was born in Texas. I came here with my mother when I was about 10 years of age on the Santa Fe railroad train. Many of you migrated from Louisiana, Texas, and so forth. This community is the only community that I've known as a home. I was educated here, El Cerrita High School graduate, Contra Costa, and San Francisco State. I worked for the city of Richmond, I worked for Alameda County probation for 35 years. And in 1967, George Livingston, George Carroll, mother Norbelene Harris, right across the street here, encouraged me to run for the city council. And I was fortunate to get elected on the very first try, thanks to many of you, and I thank Georgia, Charles Harris, I thought I saw you walk in. But Richmond has been great to me. I have been blessed by God. I have had a great opportunity to serve this citizenry, and I'm voting, and I'm running again to continue to serve you. As long as you want me to serve, I'm here. This is the only place I know that's a home. You are the only people that I know that's my friends, my loved ones, so thank you very much for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Next, let's get that introductory statement from Jim Rogers. Jim, just to brief you on the rules, we are doing a two-minute introductory statement, and then we'll have one-minute answers to questions and a one-minute conclusion. So again, two minutes, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out tonight. I've run a number of elections, and when people call me up sometimes, they don't really pay attention, they say, "Jim, why'd you vote such and such?" I don't really feel good about it. When people come out, they take their time to listen to us, I'm fine with every vote. Vote for me, don't vote for me, I'm good. But I respect that you come out so you can make a good decision. I'm running on my record. My record is one of standing up for the people in Richmond who often really don't have people staying up for them. The Chevron approval, best modernization approval in the history of United States. Protection against fires by getting rid of old machinery, protection for our kids, the $35 million Richmond Scholarship Program, $90 million total benefits, environmental protections, greenhouse gas reductions, and negotiate that along with council member Jael Myrick, Mayor Tom Butt, Nat Bates strongly supported it, and we hit a home run for the city. We have a lot of issues in this city, and I believe I have a record as a council member in getting solutions, making them happen. We talk about getting rid of cigarette and alcohol billboards in our schools, I led that fight. We talk about the Save the School effort. A lot of you probably remember, Kennedy was scheduled to close a few years ago. I led that fight. Not only did we save the schools, but using my financial background as a business person, we were able to do it at no net cost to the city budget. We paid for the schools, the schools, under a deal that I worked out, paid for some repairs that we had to pay for anyway, for the Kennedy High Swim Center roof, and we did it at no net cost to the city. So thank you very much for coming out tonight. I look forward to answering questions, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Next up, two-minute introductory statement, Virginia Ramirez. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Virginia Ramirez, and I go by Vicki. I have lived in Richmond for the past 20 years and attended the public schools here. In 2008, I received a four-year scholarship to UC Berkeley, by where in 2012, I received my BA in social welfare. I chose this career because I genuinely care for the welfare of others, and I see people as complex things, where you have to look at every factor in order to help them, in order to help each other. I'm also a, I'm the legal assistant at a nonprofit here in Richmond, where we provide low-cost services, immigration services for a lot of people in the community in Richmond and San Pablo. I'm a proud member of ACE, that's Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. I joined ACE when I was working at my current job, and a lot of people needed assistance for high rent increases, or they needed tenant rights, and I didn't know where to send them. Story short, we, ACE knocks on doors and asks residents what they're going through and tries to advocate with them and for them, and I'm very proud of that. My main, main three things I want to focus for in Richmond is maintaining the welfare of the city, for example, the roads, the parks, and I also want to, sorry, I want to defend immigration rights, especially in this era. And lastly, I want to advocate for housing. I want to change the way we think about housing, because I believe everyone deserves a stable home. And thank you again for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Next up, Demless Johnson.
Well, good evening, everyone. There we go. My name is Demless Johnson III, as mentioned, and I was born right here in the city of Richmond, well, San Pablo, at Brookside Hospital, when it was called Brookside Hospital. I'm a fourth-generation Richmond resident. My great-grandparents migrated to Richmond to work in the Kaiser shipyards, and my grandfather owned the Savoy nightclub in North Richmond. In addition to being a fourth-generation Richmond resident, I'm also a fourth-generation union member and a proud steward, shop steward of Teefster's Local 1-856, excuse me. I'm also served as a school community organizer at The Richmond High School, while I help to organize both district and community resources, so that way we can eliminate the economic, academic, and social barriers that stand in the way of student and family success. As I always say, a student can't think if they're hungry, they can't read if they don't have lights, and you can't do homework if you don't have a home. So at Richmond High School, I'll work to make sure that our students, when they come in, all they have to worry about is getting their lesson. I also serve as your chair of the Economic Development Commission, and I serve on the Citizens Police Review Commission. In addition to that, I am a member of the Iron Triangle Neighborhood Council, where I grew up, right on 59th and my great-grandparents' home. If elected on November 6th, what you will get is a young, bold, progressive leader who isn't afraid to move Richmond forward and listen to the public, and make sure that you're represented on Richmond City Council. As I always tell individuals, nothing for us without us, and you will most definitely have Demless Johnson. On my palm card, I have my personal cellphone number, which will not change after November 6th. The election is November 6th, my birthday is November 8th, you'll be able to call me on November 8th, and I will pick up the phone. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Caesar Zapata, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Caesar Zapata, and I am known around town as the candidate, the community leader that gets things done. When I put my mind into something, we work together and we achieve it. There's a community leader who wanted something done, and she called me one day, and I said, "You know, you have all these other people around in your organization." She said, "Yes, Caesar." But if I want something done, I call you. And that's how it's been. I never say no to standing up and helping out someone, regardless of where they live. I'm president of Hilltop District, never go to council, and I work up there, but I come around all over the city. Whether it be finishing up a park that took 16 years to make, I had to work with the city to make sure they understood that that park, that land was just sitting there, and the community needed that park. Or whether it be working behind 23rd Street in an alleyway, that little, did anyone know that that alleyway was the entrance to someone's home? And the kids had to walk through trash during the rainy season, they had to walk through puddles, and at night, they had to deal with drugs and prostitution. We cleaned it up, even though a lot of people said, "No, it wasn't the right alleyway." And I said, "It is the right alleyway, because that's someone's home back there. It is now paved, it now has lights, and it now has flowers and plants, and people are walking through it safely." The next thing I want to be able to work on is a hospital. We are now in a hospital desert. In the last election, everybody talked about the hospital. Election was done, so was the conversation, but I never stopped. I've been working with the hospital districts and hospital people to be able to come back and give us that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zapata. Next, Eleanor Thompson.
Good evening, everyone. Hold it close up here, South. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting us here on tonight, inviting me here tonight. My work in the city of Richmond, I have served as a substitute teacher for the Richmond Basketball District, on the police commissioner, and also I've served on Anti-Drug Task Force for five years. I also represented the West County as an elected person for the West County Democratic Party. I, excuse me, and, sorry, we're getting lost here. Let me just read this. Okay. Hello again. I have served the city of Richmond for 50 years. I have served as a substitute teacher with the school district. I have served as president of Iron Triangle Neighborhood Council for five years. I served as the Anti-Drug Task Force on that committee. I have also served as an elected district representative to represent West County Democratic Party. And I also served on the committee that Chief Lansdowne used to create the community policing. I served on that committee also, and we created and made the city much safer. I believe that he had the best community policing program that has ever come to Richmond, and there's nothing that's been like it since. He left, they changed it, and I think it wasn't for the better, but it was for the worse. And I want to run for city council, I'm running for city council because I want to do things that I've already started. I want to work with the youth, that's one of my priorities. The other is crime, and the other is that we have a safe place for seniors, you know. A lot of times, our seniors won't come outside at night because they're afraid. So we want to make the streets safer so that they can feel safe, that they can feel like they can come out.
Your time is up.
Oh.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Next, Carol Johnson.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming out, and I have to say, I'm a little bit uncomfortable, only because I'm not used to being this high up, I'm used to being on the same level with everybody else, equal footing. And I am not a Richmond native, but I have lived here in Richmond for 22 years, coming from San Francisco. I have three beautiful daughters and a handsome son, and all of them grew up here in Richmond, went to school here. And I was busy pursuing my higher education, earning my bachelor's degree in criminal justice, when I got devastating news that two of my cousins had been killed in 2004, and again in 2006, and I had a friend of mine from Contra Costa College whose life was also taken in 2006. So it was then that I got involved in the community, I had to get involved and do something. I couldn't just sit back anymore and let things happen. So that's when I met Charlene Harris and got involved with the Healing Circles of Hope and the Brady Campaign to prevent gun violence. I was the chapter president for the West County area. And in 2011, I found out about Richmond Seize Fire and got involved with them, walking in different neighborhoods all throughout Richmond, and I was not afraid, because I have come from San Francisco in some of the rougher neighborhoods, which is much worse than any neighborhood in Richmond. So in 2013, I got active and involved in the serving on the Human Rights Commission, where I know they have a special. And, let's see, I was also involved with ACE, because they wanted to advocate for raising the minimum wage, which I was very passionate about, and also the Contra Costa Racial Justice Coalition. I helped protest the jail expansion, and also with affordable housing, because I believe that the lack of affordable housing is the direct result of...
Your time is up.
...the crisis. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next, Ana Rosinos.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ana Rosinos. I am Salvadoran. My parents immigrated here in the 80s during the Salvadoran Civil War. I was very fortunate that they were in a different time, a different context, and they were able to apply for asylum and build a really successful life for my brother and I. I'm here because I'm frustrated that the privileges that they had are no longer attainable for families who don't have college degrees. And even those of us who do have college degrees find it very difficult to afford to live in California. And I already know what it's like to have to go through a lot of uprooting and leaving your home. I've unfortunately had to go through two evictions with my family, and I know that even though I was a little bit older, that my younger brother, those implications are gonna live with him for the rest of his life. That type of stress, that type of trauma doesn't go away. The reason that I'm running for city council is I've had the privilege of being able to work with low-income families and immigrants for several years. And what I've learned with working with them is that when they have the power to advocate for their needs in policy and legislation, they will show up and they will change things. And I think that we have an opportunity to do that here. I want to serve you so that I can listen to what your needs are, and so we can advocate for them together. I was appointed last fall to the city council in September, and ever since then, I've been able to update a couple of our policies and implement new ones that directly affect working families in Richmond. One of them has been to update our sanctuary city policy to prohibit city staff and funds from being used to cooperate with ICE. I also cosponsored a ordinance with Javonka Beckles, so that we no longer have extreme surveillance in our communities. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rosinos. Again, because we have a large group, we are going to limit answers to these questions to one minute, so that we can have a rich and vibrant debate and be able to field a number of questions from both League of Women Voters and the audience. We'll start on the far left with Mr. Shoenthal, and our first question is, what will you do, well, wait, does that mic get passed? What will you do to reprioritize spending in the city budget?
Right, so appreciate the question, and one of the primary things that we look at in the city budget is we need to do something that's called an efficiency report. We need to see and understand where our money is being spent, and if it's being spent well, then we can determine, hey, let's look at the city as from a neighborhood's perspective and build up the budget from the neighborhood. So when I go around the city, I hear constantly that they're not getting enough resources, they're not getting enough attention, but what we ought to do is focus that budget based on the neighborhoods, so what their needs are. So what are the needs here? What are the needs in Hilltop? What are the needs in Iron Triangle? What are the needs in Point Richmond? And focus those from the ground up, so that we're building from neighborhood integrity. So I see that budget, I think that we can really get some great things done just by analyzing how much money is being spent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shoenthal. All the same question, we'll go left to right on this one, and then in subsequent questions, we'll bounce around a little bit. So next up, please, Mr. Pimplay.
Okay, so first of all, you know, in order to prioritize spending, you need to have the money to spend. Okay, so in the last two years, our budget has gone up by $20 million without adding any stuff. All right? And this is going to continue for the next three years, because this is part of CalPERS' Step Up Program, where they're asking cities to contribute more. So yes, we can have more spending if, for example, Measure P passes. Some of that could go into code enforcement. Code enforcement has been reduced by almost half in the last 10 years. So a bunch of money will also go into kids' programs, kids' nonprofits, if Measure H passes, and if it doesn't pass, of course, we will have to give that money. So again, I also support the audit.
Thank you.
I think we all agree, and I think we're gonna hear about, all of us up here, about a lot of programs that are important, whether it's police, it's fire, it's libraries, it's job training, whatever it is. I want to talk briefly about my record, about creating the funds that actually let us do something instead of blocking our guns. The city of Richmond has had three general purposes taxes passed in the last 30 years. I was the main proponent of all three of them. What they share in common is that they are progressive taxes. Chevron alone paid about two-thirds of one of them. Big businesses, people from out of the city, rich people, paid the lion's share of them. It was the utility tax, the sales tax, and the sales tax extension. So you can talk about the good programs, you can sound good, but I'm the person who went in there on a controversial issue. Taxes are controversial, you do take your hits when you advocate for taxes. I'm the one who went in, I organized the campaigns, I wrote the ballot statements, I raised the money, and we got those passed. So a big drop in Richmond crime over the years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Next, Nat Bates, please.
Forty years representing you as the mayor, vice mayor, city council member, this city has never once had an independent performance audit of our staff. Never once. You call a city hall now, who do you get? You can't hardly find anyone. This city is also losing money through technology. Solar panel, many of you have it. Well, we used to get a lot of money from the utility tax, no longer. Telephone, landlines, people using cell phones. We're losing money. The only way you can balance a budget is you gotta look at personnel which represent almost 75% of the budget. You can't cut these other standard services, police, vehicles, gas, and so forth, and utilities. Only way you can do it is look at personnel and do, for the first time, an audit.
Thank you. Virginia Ramirez.
Can you repeat the question, please?
What would you do to reprioritize spending in the city budget?
I would think outside the box. I would want to ask the youth if they have any ideas, but also those that came before us, who've served in city council, probably reach out to them, see what their ideas are, and just think outside the box, basically, do something different than what we're already doing.
Thank you. Demless Johnson III.
Well, in order to prioritize spending, I most definitely...
I most definitely agree that we first need to have the money to spend. So we have to increase our revenue streams, and we have business taxes, utility use taxes, and property taxes. As I've always mentioned, I don't want to touch your property taxes because I feel as though the school district has done a number on your property taxes. But I would like to recruit more businesses to come through the city of Richmond as well as help small businesses grow and expand so that way we'll have the revenue streams, so that way we can spend them on departments and not cut people that we need. Also, in addition to that, making sure that we audit ourselves so that way we can see where we can cut waste as well in spending and on contracts. Thank you.
Thank you. Caesar Zapata.
Confucius once said, "The first rule of being a wise leader is that you must first define the problem." We sometimes fail to see the problem. We need data. We need to figure out where our money is going, how we're using it. At Hilltop alone, when they were trying to cut employees, I helped oversee the $1 million at Hilltop, the landscape maintenance district. We were able to find $80,000 that the city was misusing in commuting time. The employees going from Hilltop all the way down here to pick up their tools to go all the way back up there to work, only to stop two hours before so they can bring their tools back down. $80,000 going to waste. What do we do? We've got a courtyard up there for $10,000 a year. That's a savings. That's the employees being able to do their work and the community being able to see the work that they've put together. We have to think smart. We've got to look at data. And on audit, everybody's scared of an audit, but I'm all for it as well.
Thank you. And if I may remind our candidates, please refrain from using your cell phones. Eleanor Thompson, please.
Yes, when you look at, if you come to the council meeting and you look at the agenda, you'll see that there's a lot of items on there, and all of it is talking about money, giving money to somebody. So I think that they have too many consultants that they have to bring in and pay out money. Then there was an issue on agenda item about buying new chairs for thousands of dollars, but that didn't pass that night. And I think it's like a wasteful of money. We have to have a different attorney for this when you already have a city attorney, and that's more money. When you have another outside attorney, you're spending more money. So we have to be careful with the spending, and we have to look at the needs of the city and not what's not needed.
Thank you. Carol Johnson.
So yes, we definitely need an audit to find out where the unnecessary spending is and put more money to fixing these streets because I drive, I mean, driving around Richmond all the time and seeing all the streets that need repair. And also, we need more equitable funding so we can fund more youth programs.
Thank you. Ana Rosinos.
Hello. To offer a variance on everything that's been said, those are terrific ideas, I would like us to begin to implement participatory budgeting. I think that one of the biggest barriers around our budget is education and popular education in particular, so that our residents really understand all the components of our budget. Because perhaps, you know, being on the council, I know that some of these contracts are on there because there's specific expertise that we have to source out for projects. And I very much value our personnel. So I also believe that if there is an audit of personnel, it should focus on their management style and their ability to complete the tasks set forth by their department and that they have goals that are accomplishable. And so I am willing to bring participatory budgeting not only to the residents, but I believe that it will be a benefit for some of our service-level employees to be able to make those decisions and make those recommendations in a collaborative way with their supervisors and management. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold on to the mic. This round, we will kind of bounce around a little bit with this next question. Again, one-minute answers, so please try to be concise. The issue of Point Malati, a lot of residents wonder about the future of this wonderful community asset, and its future is something that people feel very differently about. What's your vision for the future of Point Malati? And what do you think we need to do in order to ensure community consensus and participation in that decision? Let's start with you, Ana Rosinos.
So my vision is the community vision that I've spoken about with plenty of youth in the community, plenty of folks of color who want to learn about the challenges and the opportunities that the space offers. Most importantly, my vision is a Point Malati where everyone feels welcome and everyone has the opportunity to take advantage of the space. And so for myself, that includes some ideas that I've heard from black land reparations, aloney land reparations, a recreation center, an information center that provides information about the nature aspects of the space, green areas that people can go hiking. I've also heard from community members that they're interested in what remediation in the space would look like for some campsites, for families to be able to get out there and enjoy it. And so my vision is very much aligned with what community members want and what the consensus is. And often, there is a lot of overlap, and I understand that community members are very passionate about the space, and I'm honored to have been able to listen to different perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, let's go to Caesar Zapata.
So I share the same thought. For me, I don't live in Point Malati. Point Malati does not belong to me. Point Malati belongs to the community, and therefore, I will be listening to the community to see what direction they wish to go in. Right now, nobody lives there. But it does belong to the whole community. And community input is very important, whether you're building a sidewalk or whether you're building a whole new community in our city. So making sure that we listen to them and then move forward from there.
Thank you. Demlis Johnson III, please.
Point Malati, I've been listening to the public. And I'm also the chair of the Economic Development Commissioner. So me and my commission, we took a trip out to Point Malati, and we talked with the planning director. And, you know, we've been talking with the individuals running the community engagement pieces, and I've been talking to y'all. And what I've been hearing is we want a place where we can take our families, where we can take our friends, where we can enjoy ourselves, a place for recreation. Of course, we want to have some open space, but at the same time, this is an opportunity to increase Richmond's business tax revenue and to also have a place where we can take our family and friends when they come into town instead of always having to drive to Pier 39 in San Francisco or down to Santa Cruz. This is our, and I talk to my students at Richmond High School as well. They're looking for a place that they can walk and take a date or, you know, go on a trip with their family for the weekends. They're looking for recreational spaces that they can enjoy. And also, as a chair of the Economic Development Commission, I'm looking to increase the city's business revenue.
Thank you. Eleanor Thompson, please.
I did go on a tour out to Point Malati, and I noticed that there were small houses out there. And I believe they say that the army people used to live there. So I think that there can be some homes built out there also and keep the beaches open and keep the open land space, you know, and like everybody else said, so that the families can be able, and it should be accessible to everybody and not just to some of the people, but to everybody. And I did go and I saw the small homes where people used to live, and I think that there could be some more homes built out there.
Thank you. Let's hear from Carol Johnson.
I'm very concerned about Point Malati because it does not have a sewer system. So it's going to be very difficult to have much of anything until that is fixed or instituted. And then this whole issue of the settlement that I have concerns about, the 690 units of luxury housing. So that is really concerning to me because people who can afford luxury housing, they have a lot of money, so automatically they have more options. And people with less money have fewer options. So we should probably mix the luxury housing with the portable housing. And it's a little too close to shovel off from my comfort, so I just, I don't know. It needs to be environmentally friendly as well as family-friendly.
Thank you. Let's pass it over and go to Jim Rogers, please.
I think a lot of us here believe that we can have our cake and our butter. We can have a powerful economic engine that can give us jobs, give us cash space, and we can also preserve and improve the miles of beautiful open space there. I go running there. I love that space. It's wonderful. But having said that, I'm not only supposed to just say, oh, well, let's try and keep it pristine and forever. There are problems with that. Once that, we can have a wonderful center that we can have a whole series of services from kayak to trails and pole sites, that we've got the economic engine, the money for development. As a businessman, as somebody who had a practice where I employed about 25 people out of that financial experience, to figure out how we bring in the businesses to me and how we parlay that money into the preservation of open space and getting access, not just to people who are upper-income people that go out and walk there, but nursery kids, parkinson's centers, et cetera. And I'd like to see that happen.
Thank you. Let's hear from Nat Bates, please.
These young people are so sharp with this technology. Experience and knowledge is what you need on the council. Only Rogers and Tom Butt know how we got and acquired Point Malati in the first place. Ron Dellis, the late Ron Dellis, presented a bill that closed all of these military installations. We got that property for $1, with the condition that it be economic development and growth and jobs. I'm sorry to say, but we missed out. We didn't get that casino. I know a lot of people didn't like it, but that was going to be $20,000, $20 million a year, another $10,000, 10,000 employees. It would have been a great opportunity for this city. And we allow the casinos from Las Vegas, from Reno, and from the card club to influence that vote. I'm sorry. Economic development, we lose that project to the government.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Please pass the mic to Vinay Pimplay.
Yeah, so I just wanted to tell Nat, I know about the history too because I have learned about it, though I wasn't there. But, you know, I'm really dedicated to the idea of public participation. And when a similar proposal came before the council in 2016, I said, "I'm not going to do a backroom deal. I'm going to approve this only if the public gets to participate first." And that is why it didn't happen in 2016. Now, in terms of what we need there, I think we need, you know, we will have to have at least 670 housing units under the judicial settlement. But I would really like us to have a lot of amenities there. But also, I would want the amenities to be such that when people come there, you know, people who may not be very interested in nature or hiking, come there, but they will come there, become more excited about it and want to explore, want to explore the germ that is Point Malati.
It's time. Yes, thank you. Mr. Scholenthal.
A stronghold this evening, everybody, a little bit of audience participation. How many of you have been on the tour out to Point Malati? Show of hands. So a little less than half of the room. And many of you, I went to four out of five visioning sessions, listened to the people of Richmond talk passionately about what they want to see. So a little story. I went up to Portland, Oregon last year with my family to Oregon State University. There's a place there that's an experiential kind of library, if you will, a place like the Exploratorium in San Francisco, where families get to come and learn about technology. Well, what if we built a place there that people can learn about the environment? They can come from all around the world. And the people that work there could live there. So it would be self-sustaining in place. So this could be a really incredible place to teach the world about sustainable development, a place where people can live and be in place so that there's not a lot of people going in and out that are living there. Thank you very much.
Please pass the mic to Virginia Ramirez.
Hi, I envision Point Malati 20 years from now being a recreational area. I mean, 20 years from now, being a, okay, sorry, let me start again. I envision Point Malati being open for everyone to use, maybe being a recreational area or a camping site, anything that can possibly bring in revenue to the city. A soccer field mixed with a football field so that we have our own field that our youth can use. I do not see housing there. I want to see it more of a recreational area that also brings in revenue. And now with the ferry that we have, people from San Francisco coming to us instead of us going over there. About outreach, I would propose door knocking. I personally didn't know about it until like the third session. And I knew about it because of the community organization. They told me, and I said, "Wait, what? They're already at the third session?" I didn't even know. Nobody, like, I didn't get the outreach. So maybe door knocking to everyone?
Thank you. If we could pass the mic to the left. We'll return to the left to right, at least from the Spanish point. I'm sorry, your right, my left. Please, over to Dave Scholenthal, yes. Thank you. Okay. Housing, housing policy, homelessness, these are major issues that confront residents of Richmond and throughout the Bay Area. Residents are very concerned about how we address these issues, and there are differences about how to move forward. Prop 10 is the state measure to repeal the policy that disallows cities from imposing new rent controls. What's your position on Prop 10? Is it a yes or a no? Please be specific. And what will you do to expand housing opportunities in our community?
So I appreciate the question. So my position on it at this time is a no on Proposition 10. What I've seen in living under the rent control in Richmond, which it's fundamentally true that the rents are too high, but it's more complex than just that. There are property owners, 75% of which in Richmond, own property and trying to rent out to do the right thing. Yet now we're pushing the affordability crisis onto the property owners. Now it's making it hard for them to survive. What I would have loved to seen, and still even on Prop 10, loved to seen, is that the community gets together, does a collaborative solutions workshop, and finds the interests that are all out there in the community to find that we can find ways to work together for lasting solutions rather than driving wedges between community members because the people who own those properties live here. They're our neighbors. So let's stop doing that. Let's stop dividing each other and find ways to work together. I think that's my time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Vinay Pimplay.
So Prop 10, no. Because once Prop 10 passes, there's going to be no bank that is going to loan any money to a developer to build high-density housing. The reason why Costa Hawkins was passed was because in Berkeley, within 15 years after rent control, the availability of rental housing went down by 15%. So if we have any sympathy for our renters, please vote no on Prop 10. Now, in terms of housing, when I was on council for two years, I approved 450 units of affordable housing, as well as 100 units of market-rate housing. And my policy was clear. We want to approve as much housing as we can. Now, in terms of homelessness, you know, it is, in terms of homelessness, we have a group. We are working on different solutions. Dave Scholenthal is on the group also. Right now, we are listening to or wanting to get your ideas.
Thank you. Jim Rogers.
Thank you. First, we have to be clear. Rent control, in the long run, whether it's good or bad, is not going to solve the affordability crisis. New housing development will solve that. In terms of Prop 10, I believe in local control, and I am committed to our cities making the right decisions, and I am supportive of Prop 10. I think that what we need to do is to focus on the part of rent control that tenants really need. That's protection against 20%, 30% rent increases. The other things, like the $200 a year that the average tenant probably pays for rent control bureaucracy, the Just Cause thing, which stops landlords from kicking out drug dealers and prostitution rings, those things we don't need. We need to have a rent control law that responds to things tenants care about, which is they don't want to be threatened with a 30% rent increase. We need to ditch the other stuff. I think we can do- I think we can do that, and I'm committed to doing that.
Thank you. Nat Bates.
And demand is very simple. That dictates what you get for your rent. In the city of Richmond, the demand outweighs the supply. We've got to build more apartments and condos. I saw Adams back there, this unit up there on 22nd Street is beginning to take shape. We try to do some building on our old Dolan site up there on Central Avenue. We met with opposition, not from Richmond, but from El Cerrito. You've got to build if you want to cut down the cost of rents. Supply and demand.
Thank you. Virginia Ramirez, please.
Hi, yes, for homeless, I would suggest the mobile housing that have, that other groups have brought up. And, but it should also include a holistic approach of services, so that they can help get transitioned into a stable home. As for Prop 10, I support Prop 10. There's a saying that, in Spanish, that says, "Por unos pagan todos." And because some people have been taking advantage of the system, there has to be rules and slaves. And this housing situation has gone worse since like the past 10 years. It's not going to get any better. Supply and demand, I don't believe in that, because, you know, we're not... At this point, if we let it, if there's no control, it's going to keep, housing is going to keep rising and rising and rising until when. And I don't believe that we should be slaves to paying for housing, because now we get to decide, we don't want to have children, because we can't afford it.
Thank you.
For childcare, because everything goes to your housing.
Thank you. Demless Johnson III.
So, in regards to the homeless, as I mentioned before in the last forum, I believe in partnering with John Joya's office, so that way we can bring the micro pads to Richmond, California. And with those are shipping crates that have been converted into housing. And then at the bottom of the housing, there's services, wraparound services for the homeless. And one of the opponents at the last candidate forum stated that they would charge $1,000 a month, which is false. It is free. And then also in regards to Proposition 10, I am not for Proposition 10. A lot of people talk about the future housing stock. I want to talk a little bit about the existing housing stock, and how those who own properties today are talking about getting out of the renting game. And if we don't have a, if we don't have a safety net for those individuals who are renting currently, because we have so many property owners, with also in addition to that 75% living in Richmond, that 75% is made up of women and people of color mostly. And so, we're making women and people of color shoulder the burden when large-scale property owners like Richard Poe and Jon Stewart can just pay the fees and get away with it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Caesar Zepeda.
As for Prop 10, I think that it's an outdated law. And I think, instead of repealing it, we need to amend it. There is protections in there, but we need to be able to amend it to bring it up to date. When it was in 1995, it just sort of stopped everything there. Let's not go from one extreme to the other, going to hurt people. What we ultimately want to be able to do is allow people to become homeowners. So, they control their own destiny. They control how much they're going to pay, more or less, right? Because now it's going to be their own investment. I was very lucky to be able to buy my house when I was 22 years old. My parents instilled that in me, making sure that I will invest in my future for myself and for my family. So, we want to make sure that for the future generations, they know, invest. A lot of the previous generation, that's what they did. They purchased properties for their investment. And now, we want to tell them, "Yeah, you can't do that anymore." We want to make sure that we protect their investment, and also that we create our own investment for the future.
And Mr. Zepeda, was that a no on Prop 10? Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Eleanor Thompson.
I support rent control as it is, the policy that was passed, I support that. But I don't support Prop 10, because we don't know the outcome of Prop 10. We don't know what effect it would have on renters, and we don't know what effect it would have on the landlord. So, therefore, I don't support it. And when you don't have enough houses, that means that more people are moving into the city. So, we need to find a way to build more house and create more house. And we have a lot of vacant lots and empty homes that the city has rehabbed. So, they should put people into those homes, and that's what I think they should do. And use those vacant lots, so that people have somewhere to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Johnson.
Oh my gosh. Yes, I definitely support Prop 10, because to say that we don't know how it will turn out, we can see it now. Because single-family homes do not have rent control. So, those landlords can raise the rent as much as they want, and you have whole families and seniors being priced out, at risk of becoming homeless. Or if they are able to afford the rent increases, they don't have any money left over for food or medicine or anything else like that. So, we can see now what's happening without rent control curves. Single-family homes and apartments built after 1995. And the skyrocketing rents is one of the biggest contributors to the housing crisis. And yes, there is a crisis. We can see the homeless encampments everywhere. I definitely support Prop 10.
Thank you. Otto Rosinos.
Yes, I stand with over 600,000 voters in California who signed Proposition 10 and took it to the Capitol to put it on the ballot. It was not only renters, it was landlords and homeowners too, sticking together and saying, "The reason why we're in this problem is because the developers have held the power for too long, and we're exhausted. We need to protect our small landlords, and the only way we're going to do that is by us having a little bit more control over speculation, so that folks don't feel like they have to sell their homes, and men can no longer afford to purchase a home here." Because that is what's happening, is the market is taking advantage of all of us, all of the community members. And so, yes, I stand for Prop 10. I know that it's us standing up against all the corporate landlords that have taken advantage of us for too long. In Richmond, the majority of renters are people of color. 60% of the black community and 63% of the Latino community. We must do something, because they will not do anything for us. So, we have to do it ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosinos. Please hold on to the mic. And I want to remind our audience that our big AD 15 debate with our wonderful candidates is coming up right after this. We'll have a brief intermission and grab some more refreshments if we can. And with that, it'll be time for closing statements. We'll go from this end across, and they will be one minute only. So, please, again, be concise, be clear, and give your final statement to the wonderful audience here. Ms. Rosinos, please begin.
Thank you, everyone, for taking the time to come out and listen to all of us share our vision for you. I think most importantly, I would like to get to know as many of you so you can share your vision with me, so that I can implement it into the work that I'm doing. I'm very excited about all the things that we can accomplish together. I want to make sure that we bring high-paying jobs and are moving towards a greener economy, and that we're making sure that Richmonders are first in line to get those jobs as well, and are able to get that affordable housing. I know that it's really going to be difficult to tackle some of the issues we're going through, but just know that I will stand up, so that we maximize density around our transit areas, so that we're making sure that we're cutting down on pollution by making sure that we're making our streets more walkable as well. I'm also a strong advocate for our commercial corridors like Main Street and 23rd Street. There's a lot of opportunity to invest deeper in our small entrepreneurs, so that we can give back and purchase here locally and increase our sales revenue. Thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate it, and I would love to meet with anyone after and answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosinos. Carol Johnson, closing statement, please, one minute.
And thank you again for this opportunity for all of us to share our vision for Richmond. I hope you will vote for me in November, because although I'm new to city politics, I am not new to community activism. I will continue my level of commitment, my passion for serving Richmond. Currently, I'm on the homeless task force, and I will continue with the Racial Justice Coalition for Criminal Justice Reform and with Safe Return to help advocate for better service of formerly incarcerated people, which will make the public safer in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Eleanor Thompson.
I don't know why I get so nervous when it's my turn to just talk about me. But anyway, like I've said, I've lived in the city originally for over 50 years, and I've served, I've lived in Iron Triangle for 30 years. And like I said once before, whenever you wanted something in our community, we had to go, we had to fight for it. And I was always at the city council fighting for something with the Iron Triangle. We had to fight for our stocks at in our neighborhood. We got the stocks in. We went out and created and went to get Crime Watch. I attended all those meetings, and we created the Crime Watch on our street, on 7th Street. We had that put in. But anyway, I would like for you to vote for me November the 6th. I would like to further the work. I work with the youth, that's one of my main things. On Christmas and holidays, we give away hundreds of toys. We, I created, founded the Fourth of July Parade and Festival in North Richmond. And every year, we have that. We give out hundreds of backpacks to the young people. So, vote for me November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Caesar Zepeda.
Some of the leadership, I was endorsed by the California Democratic Party, by Senator, by Senator Kevin DeLeon, by State Controller Betty Gueye, amongst many others in here, including Councilmember Jael Myrick. I know what it takes to be out in the community. I've been out in the community for a long time, and I've been fighting for our community, picking us up where we have no voice. I make sure that the community knows we have a voice, making sure that we can go up, whether it be to an elected official, or whether it be just to your next-door neighbor. It's very important to know that whether I get a title November 6th or not, because you do not need a title to make a difference. I will continue being out in the community as I have for all these years. Thank you so much, and I hope to be able to earn your vote. Thank you.
Demless Johnson III.
Well, once again, my name is Demless Johnson III, and I'm running for Richmond City Council. I was born and raised here in the city of Richmond. The only candidate born and raised here in the city of Richmond. And right now, in the age of displacement and gentrification, what we need is real, bold, progressive leadership from home, from home. Individuals that know the nuances of our city, the ins and the outs, someone that doesn't have to be explained what's going on here in the city of Richmond, and someone that knows where our city is heading, and not stuck on the past vision of where our city was. My vision for Richmond extends to the year 2050. And the reason why I say Richmond 2050, because I'll be sitting where most of you are sitting, wondering what kind of, what kind of housing, economic, and opportunities will we have here in the city of Richmond for my grandkids, my great-grandkids? Because I know when my great-grandparents got on that train leaving Texas, Mississippi, and Louisiana, they were thinking about my future. And I'm here to think about your future as well as that of your generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Virginia Ramirez.
Hi, thank you again, everyone, for having me tonight. So, my closing statement is, I want to work with everyone to come up with solutions. This notion about the renters against the landlords, landlords against the renters, like, I see the bigger picture. I see, what is our goal, stable housing? Because when you create instability in somebody's home, you create instability for everything else. Everything, they have to decide if their money goes to healthy food, if their money goes to the health center, or if it all goes to rent. Or they have to work two jobs. And I want, I want everyone to treat others as they want to be treated. Just because you're not going through it, doesn't mean that other people that live in Richmond aren't going through this. That's why rent control passed with 60%, because people were going through this. And I vow to work with others, not you against me, but what is the main goal? What do we want for everyone?
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Next, Matt Bates.
Well, let me just say this. During my career, I've been very much of a common sense person. And to that end, I would suggest to you that if you're going in for tax examination, you want to get yourself a good accountant. Especially if you're going in for a heart transplant, you better get the best doctor you can get. Which means that you're looking at people who have experience, they have knowledge, and they've been around for some time, and they know what they're doing. And that's what I present to you. Forty years of experience as your mayor, vice mayor, council member, I know the problems. And anyone can tell you, and I'm on the council, we get things done. So, thank you very much for your attention and your support.
Thank you. Jim Rogers.
Thank you very much again for coming out tonight. I hope when you go out to vote, you look at the record of what we've accomplished. I have a record of having worked on the issues that matter to people. Going from the Chevron refinery approval, going to getting rid of cigarette and alcohol billboards in our schools that target African-American and Hispanic communities, going to getting rid of gun dealers in residential neighborhoods. And I have the experience as a small business owner, with a business for about 25 years, where I employed about 25 people. I can see both sides of the question, both as a public servant and as a private business owner. When you go out to vote, you're going to hear a lot of promises from a lot of people about what they're going to do for you. I really hope you'll sit through it and look through who's actually delivered real solutions that matter. And I have a record of doing that, and I hope you'll read that record, and I hope you'll support me. Thank you.
Thank you. Vinay Pimplay.
So, thank you all for coming out here this evening. Most of you know me, because when I was in council for two years, I visited each of your councils at least twice, some of them three, four times. And I came there not just to tell you what was happening in council that might affect you, but because I wanted all of you folks to be my eyes and ears, so that I could make better decisions. And, you know, we are going to face some major challenges. The East Bay Times had endorsed me last time, because they said that I was the most financially astute person on council and could be trusted to balance the city's priorities. So, if we get together, we can really solve those problems of education, good jobs, and crime. We can make it happen. So, please, join the California Democratic Party, which has endorsed me, and vote for me, and please tell your friends about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And David Shoultal, please.
So, it's a culmination of my life, of my work in volunteering, where my heart has decided to be of deeper purpose, to serve as a Richmond City Council member. I am a servant leader. I believe that serving on the Richmond City Council is not to push ideology, but to be of service to the people of Richmond. We've got to deliver core city services. It's not about me saying left or right. It's about making sure that the city services are delivered. And when I first thought about running eight years ago, it didn't seem that attractive to me. I thought, "Oh, the conventional wisdom is I have to go out and find people who think like me, act like me, and agree like me." But that didn't, was not of interest to me. So, nine collaborative solutions later, where we brought people together who disagreed with each other and who have now seen each other and find that there's a path forward to work for a better Richmond. I want to work with each and every one of you. You catch me with that timing. So, I ask for you to catch the wave with Dave, 2018. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you very much, and let's get a round of applause for all of our candidates.